Before we start the formal business of the meeting, I must remind you that the audio of this meeting is being live broadcast on the council's website and the video of the meeting will be published after the meeting. I would like to introduce the officers supporting today's meeting and the councillors in attendance will be introduced shortly. We have Mike Hill, Acting Chief Executive, Alison Ball, Assistant Director of Finance, Mike Avery, Assistant Director of Planning and Regeneration, Helen Barrington, Director of Organisational Development and Democratic Services, David Wakeling, Director of Health and Community Wellbeing, and finally myself, Caroline McClery, Democratic Services Officer and Clerk of the Meeting.
Okay, thank you. So welcome everybody. I know we're on all these different things, so people watching it, listening to it for anything else will have to bear with us. We're still quite in the start of all these processes and they all seem to be different to me being on many, many different things. So if we do have a delay, it won't be purposeful. We've just pressed the wrong button. Okay, we'll start on item one, which is apologies for absence. Are there any received?
No apologies for absence, John. If I could just, as it's a virtual meeting, if I could just read out the councillors who are present. So present at this meeting are the Chair of the Meeting, Councillor Clarke, we have Councillor Payne, Councillor Barnes, Councillor David Ellis, Councillor Gregory, Councillor Hollingsworth, Councillor McCrossan, and Councillor Wheeler.
Thank you. Second item, which is to prove his correct record, the minutes of the meeting held on 19th of March 2020. You've got something to adjust, Alec, I believe, on that. That's on page five.
Yes, thanks Chair. Just on recommendation three at the top of page six. So we just need to insert under the delegated authority needs to be in consultation with yourself as leader and the portfolio holder for public protection. And that was just omitted from the bar minute.
Thank you. With that alteration, are we agreed, the true and correct record? Move up there, or whatever. Agreed? Everybody again. Thank you. Item three, which is the declaration of interest. Are there any declared? No. Okay, then we'll move on to four, which is the COVID-19, the council's response, which has been absolutely excellent. And report to the Director of Health and Community Wellbeing.
Can I start, John?
Yeah.
I'm here, yeah. So yeah, thank you Leader. Excuse me, I'm croaky. I asked for this report to be produced because it is extremely important to me to recognise the outstanding work and commitment that officers of the council have displayed in rising to the challenge of this unprecedented global pandemic. I'm sure you'll agree. All officers of the council have been involved in the response from some shape or another, whether it be, first of all, frontline services continuing to provide waste, street cleansing, or other environmental services. We have had staff being redeployed and trained to help out those also on the frontline to keep and continue those services being delivered. We've also had staff being redeployed to form part of the coordinating group, the Incident Management Team, that we call the IMT. And of course then we've had other teams as well, finance, planning, et cetera, that have tried to continue to deliver business as usual while supporting those colleagues who have been doing all the work in relation to COVID. And also these teams, a lot of them have been working flexibly from home. So the complexities of this challenge was absolutely immense, I'm sure you'll agree. And officers have worked hand in hand with the local resilience forum to deliver the countywide pandemic plan as it developed. However, on top of that, we've also had to respond to all the guidance and instructions from central government as and when it was issued, making quick decisions, working with yourselves as the leadership to make sure we made the right decisions at the right time. And I think we did this really effectively whilst, of course, at the same time delivering our usual high standards of services and our response at a local level. That's probably all I want to say at this point, is an introduction. I just want to hand over to Dave Wakeling, who led the IMT on the response part of the process. And Dave will now take Cabinet through the report.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Mike, and thanks Leader for the opportunity to present the work of the council. Back to Cabinet for noting in relation to how we've responded to the COVID pandemic locally. I won't dwell quickly, I won't dwell, sorry, for much time on the opening report because the detail is in the second paper. Just to point out though, from the accompanying paper, that this report is for noting. I think we've put together a very comprehensive chronology and explanation of how the councillors responded. And I think it's also important just to highlight in the equality section of the report. And I'll only raise just a couple of points from that before I move to the main paper, is that for sure, as we've moved through the pandemic, that there have been inequalities in how the pandemic has affected certain communities, whether that be based on ethnicity or indeed age. But if I could take you to the report itself, I understand that you've all got paper copies of the report. What I was proposing to do was just to spend probably 10 minutes at the most pulling out some of the key sections that we want to just momentarily draw your attention to, and then give the opportunity at the end of that time to ask questions on any part of the report. But for this purpose of time saving and efficiency, we weren't going to go obviously through it page by page. I would like to say from the outset, and colleague Lance GB is on the line with us and the call, I would like to record my personal thanks to Lance for putting this document together for me with a list of other colleagues who you can see under the section contributions from. The production of the paper has been very much like the response itself. It has been an extraordinarily big team effort, but somebody's got to pull all that together and be responsible for its final approval. And Lance has done that for the council exceptionally well. And I'm very grateful for him for doing that. So if I just start to move you through the paper for the next, so five or 10 minutes, and just point out from the first couple of pages, as Mike has alluded to, that the nature of the pandemic response, like for all local authorities, was unprecedented. We've got a good history of responding to local emergencies, but something on this scale was just extraordinarily testing and needed a response like we've probably never had to do and may hopefully never have to do again. So we've always had a good relationship with the local resilience forum. And as a category one responder, we have a legal duty to be prepared and to take part in formal structures of preparedness under the local resilience forum. And that's convened in two-tier authorities by the county council. And they are very organised, they have dedicated staff and plans all ready to go for incidents like this. But in the case of COVID-19, that obviously wasn't the case because it's a new virus. And we were working originally from a well-practised flu pandemic plan, which was adequate in the beginning, but later had to change as the virus really took hold. So if I just move you down towards page four of the report, I'd just like to highlight there really the speed in which, as we all know, everything seemed to happen at the time. So you know, from New Year's Eve into January, it seemed very much a problem at a distance, didn't it? You know, we were hearing about it in China, we were passing through Christmas and New Year, knowing that something was happening far away, but probably weren't really alive to the magnitude of it until it landed in Europe. And then throughout January into February, as it became very obvious that it was only a matter of time before it affected the UK, everything started to ramp up in terms of preparedness and preparation. Indeed, if I just take you down then to page four in the Incident Management Team. We held our first IMT on the 12th of February. So that was very early on. And I think in collaboration with the Leader and the Deputy Leader and Mike and SLT, the call to mobilise at that time was probably one of the best things we did. It signalled to ourselves that we were going to prepare for something that was very significant, but it also put a signal out to the council to be on standby to move and react. And at the first Strategic Coordination Group that I went to, I came back to SLT colleagues and then reported that back to the Leader and Deputy Leader, we were given worst-case scenario figures that at the time seemed quite alarming. So you know, those figures were that anywhere between 20 and 50% of staff could be affected by the virus, some of it mild, but some of it serious. 4% of the population could be hospitalised. And between 2 and 3% of the population may not make it through the virus, a fatality rate. And those numbers for Nottinghamshire were extraordinarily high. And when we came back to into SLT with those figures from Strategic Coordination Group, we took a very quick decision to run by the leadership of the council to say, can we mobilise a full-scale response? And with your support, that's what we did. Moving into an emergency planning response from a normal state of operating feels very different. And I think for all of us that were involved in those first two or three weeks, and the names of who did what are highlighted on page six and seven, it did feel very different. We were moving into, sorry Jenny, are you?
Can I just have some clarification here? Because I've got next four or six?
Or seven.
Or seven?
Okay.
We're on eight, nineteen.
Did you refer to the paragraph numbers rather than the page numbers? That will help.
Oh, okay. So have you got paragraph four? So paragraph four is business continuity planning and defining critical functions. Okay, thanks Jenny. So if I just take you to the paragraph before that, so the paragraph 3.5 and 3.6, so just a page probably earlier in your papers, that describes the LRF strategic meeting on the 5th of March. And it was that meeting then that really triggered a complete change in how the council worked. So the structure then that you see below at paragraph 3.8, were the new arrangements that SLT supported. And those arrangements obviously then dovetail into regular conversations between Mike, the Leader, the Deputy Leader on a daily basis over the decisions that were needed and the structures that we needed to put in place. And you'll see from the layout of the roles within para 3.8, that many people had to do things that they were not trained to do and indeed hadn't had practising doing before. And what was very evident, and indeed is more so at the end of this first wave process, is the extraordinary flexibility and professionalism of staff within the council. Because not only were they working under personal pressure in very strange circumstances, and indeed in different roles and at a different tempo to their day job, they did all that and a lot more. And as we move on to the second part of the paper in a few minutes' time around humanitarian aid, we saw that exercised again in terms of the effort and impact that officers delivered way beyond their training and day-to-day work requirements. If I just move you down towards paragraph five then, and just describe that decision-making in these sorts of command and control incidents feel very strange. Not so much to me from an ex-police perspective, but in council, local authority world, moving into a fast-moving commander control management of emergency planning does feel different. And one of the things that was exceptional in Gedlin is that many people, many of the staff were just doing things in a, not asking questions, we know we need to do it. We'd got junior members of staff tasking officers slightly above them. It was just a very solid team effort around decision-making. And we have a model to follow and our agendas throughout the, and often, many often days where we have two meetings a day, followed that national decision-making model, which enabled us linking up to Mike and John to get decisions signed off through Fran and Helen, enabled our decision-making to be really accurate, really timely. And I think that certainly wherever possible, it was a system that allowed US political leaders to be completely cited and ultimately taking the decisions that enabled us to move at the pace that we needed to move at. If I take you down towards paragraph seven, one of the things that was a real success of our early achievements, and we were going on to calls twice a week with the TCG, which is the Tactical Coordinating Group. And we stole a real march on this because having people like David Archer and Helen and Andrea, so people with personnel experience on the team, we were very able early on to identify critical roles within the council and make an assessment through Business Impact Assessment, which Grant helped us with and Lance, to identify which roles in the council needed to be protected and managed at all cost. And what you see as we move through paragraph seven is the amount of redeployment and training and risk assessments that had to take place to protect our core services. And as Mike alluded to, with SLT's support and blessing, we were able to move people all around the council to protect those critical roles, which in virtually every case meant training people, risk assessing, briefing, toolbox talking, people to do jobs, you know, they never thought they would have to do. And that's been of a number of strengths, one of the council's greatest. I would point to 7.8 and the few paragraphs of seven, only to identify that working from home and agile working, the council, as you know, we've had slow-time structured plans to think about and act on this for well over a year. And good progress had been made systematically planning the best way to achieve a new way of working agilely. What their pandemic threw on us was the need to get yourselves as members and officers working at home at quick time. And to do that meant an extraordinary amount of candle burning and extra work from IT and comms and customer services to reprioritise, redistribute, reallocate, purchase extra kit to get people working from home. And the precision behind all that was really quite impressive. And you don't really realise it when you get to the end of it and look back. But not only did we identify critical roles, we went down to critical people, we assessed their IT needs. IT was called in from some people, redistributed to others. iPads were enabled with new functionality. Soft phones were redistributed around the organisation and fed out to people so they could work at home. And all of that was taking place within like days, you know, a week and a half, two weeks, the whole thing had been achieved. And it just shows great fortitude from those professionals in the council that had got leverage on making that happen. Because without getting the IT mobilised with a small team in the way that it did, we would not have been as successful. In paragraph 8.3, I'd just like to point out the gigantic effort that Grant, our Health and Safety Manager, has performed in all of this. I mean, a number of people have. I only point to Grant because, you know, he is a single agent. And we do rely on him to do many things across the council, and particularly at this time. Grant was one of those officers, as Alec was for us, who spent many, many an hour, often late at night, to be ready for a comprehensive and sometimes quite bruising meeting from me, asking for the real detail of guidance that may have been released at 10 or 11 o'clock the night before. And I wanted the detail by 10 o'clock the next morning. People only turned that amount of product round by working well outside their hours. And I could point to many people that have done that. But I do in paragraph 8.3, because without the sight over the guidance, you know, we wouldn't have made all the right decisions in the right order and in the right fashion. So just moving on to some practical things that had to happen. So around waste, which opens up in the paper at paragraph nine, we obviously identified with yourselves and Peter, John and Michael, that keeping the waste service effectively operating was virtually number one priority, next to keeping the cemetery's service well supported and maintained. And through Ellen's leadership at the time in the depot, because Mark Hurst unfortunately was away from work in the first few weeks of it, a lot of management changes were very quickly brought in under Ellen's stewardship and staff from leisure. So particularly Mark went into leisure and provided a management function, which again was well out of Mark Smith's experience. He's an exceptionally good manager, and that's how he was able to pull it off. But Mark Smith is just a great example of, you know, deploying a leisure centre manager to day-to-day waste operations, you know, and with his interpersonal skills and his general managerial ability, he was able to do that exceptionally well. At paragraphs 10 and 11, I'd just quickly just like to point to the, again, the skillful and extraordinary levels of commitment shown by the cemetery's teams. A bit like in the LRF, it's the death cell, the excess death cell, as it's called. They have to deal with all the trauma of all of this. And at the front end, Amanda, and behind Amanda, Jo and others that have managed the process of cemeteries and burials throughout this period should be highly congratulated because they've had to face the front end of this. They've had to go to some of the funerals, they've had to manage grieving families. And I know that Mike and myself and Mel Cryer and others have all done our best to keep Jo and the team buoyant and positive. But it has been challenging because, as I say, the bit of the operation they do is clearly the saddest. Customer Services, you know, in many ways have shown modern working can be effective. Because as we emptied out the civic to protect our staff, you know, they took their kit and went home and managed the function of the council, the front door from their dining rooms, their kitchens, their bedrooms, the spare rooms at home. And if you were just a customer of Gedlin and you didn't walk by the civic centre, you'd never know that there was a problem. You know, the service, you could still dial a number, you could still get a friendly voice. And that was taking place, as I say, from people's kitchens, their conservatories, all enabled by the IT department. But I think it is an extraordinarily impressive thing to be proud of, that the functionality of the council, as it is today, is still being maintained by people shuffling around at home and making it work until a point when we can all come safely back to work and pick the new world up together. Just the last few minutes from me, and I know perhaps the Leader and Michael will want to talk probably more, more on this than I, so I'll only introduce it, is the work that we realised very early on needed to be done on a humanitarian perspective. So it became very evident by the middle of, the middle to late March, as people started to have to self-isolate. And as we understood exactly what that meant to the good residents of Gedlin, that many people were going to find it difficult to access things like prescriptions and medicines and food. And I think because we are compelled to work behind the council's vision, serving people, improving lives, that sort of DNA that runs through us because of the council's vision statement means something to us. And the decisions that were made very early on to mobilise with your blessing and support the Richard Ehren Centre into our humanitarian centre, our superfood bank, and to do that with the support and blessing of the churches that we work with regularly in Gedlin, was an extraordinarily good move. And it is unprecedented in the county. The only other county district that's responded as well as this is Bassetlaw. And Bassetlaw have done that through their very active CVS, as Mike knows. We don't have that CVS structure in Gedlin, so the council chose to lead on the humanitarian aid. And it has been quite outstanding. And from paragraph 12, the detail of all of that is explained in the papers. So in relation to the food bank provision, it's probably best to say, because there's a lot in these pages now, that the raising of the money, not only from yourselves kindly given from your members' pots, but through the innovative work around the Space Eye fundraising exercise that the council led on. And Ellen's team led on that in its entirety. But the energy that went into promoting that fundraising exercise was simply quite remarkable. And as you'll know, £20,000 in 48 hours, Space Eye themselves recognising that was an extraordinarily amazing, you know, it featured on their website as being one of the fastest 20,000s ever raised, shows, I think, the good spiritedness of Gedlin residents to give. But also the council's ability to do something that it never had to do before, because we've never fundraised in that way. And I recall a conversation with Ellen where she said, we've got, you know, it's a good idea, but the politicians want me to do it like in a week's time. We've never done it. Well, I think it was open in less than a week's time. And that's because, you know, you asked for it to be done. We knew it was the right thing to do. You know, and officers work around the clock, you know, and emailing people at home and all the rest of it to get it done. But the public contribution to that was quite staggering. For any of you that saw the photographs or tweets or little videos that came out of the Richard Ehren Centre, when it was stopped with its first purchase of food, you know, it looked like we'd created our own supermarket, to be honest. The amount of product that was in there linked to the volunteering call-out that you led for us and with us was quite remarkable. And you can see through the paragraphs in 12, the sort of impact of that food distribution and how it linked in with the volunteers that were created through our own call-out to volunteers, which was very significant. And, you know, we had, I mean, colleagues will accurately point into this, into the paper I'm flicking through, where that volunteer number is. But I think we had in excess of 200, 300 volunteers, all registered, vetted and checked. And I know it's in there, but I can't instantly put my finger on the paragraph.
500, David, 500.
Thanks Leader. And they were Gedlin residents coming forward to help Gedlin people. And I think that reflects well on us as a council, because that's the mandate, it's the mantra of what we stand for. And I think we saw it evident there in that volunteering capacity to help Gedlin council and ultimately help people in the borough. So paragraph 1231 gives you an insight around the numbers involved in requests for council service. So at the time of, you know, finalising this report, 690 requests for service, which have been met by the council, you know, considered and met, now, which is a fantastic achievement. And this section of the report was put together by Natasha, who crunched the numbers for us for SLT, so we could share them with yourselves as Cabinet. And it very usefully describes how that need has manifested across the borough. The paragraphs 12, all through section 12, talks really about our contribution and impact in responding to financially the pandemic. If I just then move down to, I suppose coming towards the last quarter of the report, sections around our colleagues in housing and benefits response. and benefits responded under Alison's leadership, Alison Ball. You know, they have been, as you can imagine, extraordinarily busy too. And and you'll recall from the the guidance that was coming out at the time, quite rightly, lots of attention needed on on those that had got unstable tenancies or indeed were homeless. Then you recall the 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 Ashcombe government, that everybody was to be brought inside, that no rough sleepers should be allowed to be outside and become affected by the pandemic. And and all of those, that work was done at great haste and with painstaking accuracy to to find people accommodation. And I know, and the the team did that very much on their own, they were reporting into I M T. But as an housing team, they they did an amazing job. And and they they linked it to county colleagues, that they dealt with the the stresses and the strains of people. And, you know, to to yourself, you know, Jenny and Henry have got an interest in those portfolios because it's your health or your direct responsibility. I'm sure you're, you know, you're proud as we are as a council of how they mobilised under under inordinate pressure. The section on crime and disorder I'll move through because it's there for your noting. And I'd just like to point really out on paragraph sixteen, as you can see in table L, the impact that the comms team have had throughout this period. I know that Rob is on is on the line, I can see his face. You know, they have been spinning like tops for, you know, to for me to put an analogy around it. You know, they were getting requests from the county council, requests from me, requests from the leader, the request from Mike, the deputy leader, US portfolio holders. Their workload ever seemed to change on a almost a minute by minute basis. And again, I haven't asked the question, but I'm sure it's the case that the only way you can keep up with that level of demand in that pressured environment is you're pulling it outside of your normal hours. And I'm guessing that comms colleagues are the same as the majority of those involved in this. But more hours than we know of, to be honest, to get that amount of work done. And and it was to the highest quality. You'll see with the appendix, the the poster document that Rob's attached, that's as an appendix to this paper, that covers the volume of comms activity. And never once did I hear them say no, and never once did I hear them moan. Not to me anyway, you might have done to Caroline on the call and others, but they just got on with it. And it's great credit to them as professionals for working in that way. I think then the the section that you'll be interested that Mike will want to cover and and probably Alison as well, is the impact of this on council expenditure and council budgets. And I'll let others comment on that, and that's probably Alison will want to come in later. But just to say, it's a significant impact. And, you know, Mike with John and Michael, you know, are leading the thinking now about how we reset and recover, having gone through this first first wave. If I just take you to paragraph twenty one, one, we're coming to the the end of the paper now. I'd just like to point out that, you know, throughout all the business of the day job, you know, our staff are always looking for opportunities to go the extra mile. And the humility and professionalism of of council staff never ceases to amaze me because the work that was done at the Q M C with colleagues of the city council was was picked up by one of our past supervisors through a conversation with somebody that works at the hospital out of, you know, off duty. When a conversation was being kicked around about, you know, how dreadful it all is and how pressured it is. And, you know, it's just great to get outside when you're working in the hospital, but the garden we go in is a little bit grubby. You know, that was picked up by the antennae of one of our parks managers, turned in to a conversation within the past, that quickly came up to Mike. And, you know, yourselves and up in our staff, filling some, filling some, sorry, working with the city council. And between them, again, all this is all, we're talking like two or three days, we're not talking weeks of planning and garden designs and permissions and authorities within a short period of time transformed a recreational space at Q M C. You know, and, you know, you're right to say the clap for care initiative is entirely right and clap for the N H S. But it's also right, as we know, to clap for the frontline staff, like our parks and street care guards. And indeed, we did that on numerous occasions. But that was just a great example of staff needing needing at every level throughout the process. Figure twenty three describes really how we would approach if we had to activate a wave to plan. So if if the pandemic developed again and we had to press the go button, as I call it with colleagues, that's what would happen. And 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 those sections, and it was the deputy leader asked us to pull this together, are the things that we would do to activate our plan again if we need to. The rest of the documents, so the appendices show the massive amount of work. And that's the the best word to describe it, that Fran in legal, particularly with some of her staff, have done with S L T to get the decision notices drafted up, to get them in front of John or Michael, to sign off to cover off all the activity and the decisions we were taking on a daily basis. I I'd love Fran to be our report writer all the time, I'm told that that's never going to happen. But Fran writes exceptionally good reports in super fast time. And now, I think all the all the service managers will wish that that Fran for that to continue, but I know it's not going to. But again, when you look at the volume of the reports and the complexity of some of them, again, this is often time spent burnt on the clock outside of working hours. The case studies are there for you to look at. There are some heartwarming stories there. You know, that's not all of them, they're examples. And, you know, you may want to pick one or two out that you're perhaps familiar with to comment upon. But the case studies really define what the council is about. And I think in conclusion, what what I have deduced from working, you know, with colleagues on a daily basis, is that you have within the council an extraordinary group of officers that can drop one job and pick up another without fear or favour, without training, without any question and can deliver for you as as members, you know, a first class response. And I I've said, and this is my final final shot, to be honest, the things that I wanted most to happen, I think have all come true. And and that is, we'd served the public well throughout all of this. None of our staff would become badly affected by the virus. That as officers and members, none of us would be hospitalised. And we would, as a council, deliver on on our serving people, improving lives vision. And I think we've done all of those things. And I know that working from home sometimes feels very strange. I know when you look at the council building and all the rooms aren't full, as they have been in the past, that feels strange. But but, you know, we've had to do all of that to keep people safe. And 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 I would say, having had nobody hospitalised and having lost nobody to the virus that we know of from a staff point of view or a member point of view, they are successes for Gedlin. And if we needed to press the go button again, I can assure you that we're we are ready and, you know, skilled enough to do it. And I'd like to finish there, Leader, if I can, and then take any questions.
Yeah, thanks, David, for that comprehensive explanation. I know you could go for hours on this because there's so many stories. I'd just like to, is this all going to be published on our website? This document?
There's certainly no reason why the vast majority couldn't be published as a as a, it's all a matter of fact. I mean, I could check that out with with legal, but I don't think there's anything in there that would would not be relevant for anybody to read if they wish to do so.
Because there are people out there still thinking that, you know, and you've seen some of the petty complaints coming, which are very important if it's on your doorstep. But you can see the massive amount of work that's going off. And I know, as as Michael knows from the O G A and myself, I was at D C N this morning at half past eight. We were discussing things way beyond this, how are we going to, you know, set back if it occurs again, all those types of things. There's been hour after hour after hour. And I think sometimes people need to, you know, understand that. It's not just happening locally, it's happening nationally and internationally, and it's a very, very big thing to deal with. But thanks for that, thanks for that and leading us through that. So we would just call for the comments at the moment, I've got one at the end when I move the recommendations. So anybody like to comment?
John, can?
Where are you?
John.
Yeah.
Can I just agree what Dave said? I think the staff has been absolutely fantastic. I mean, I haven't been involved personally, but every every day I've had a phone call from Esther telling me what the position is, keeping me informed. Everybody in offices has served members in the community first class, and I've got nothing but praise for all of them. And I think they've done a tremendous, tremendous job.
Thank you.
And the mayor's, the mayor's office has had some very nice comments from people saying how much they appreciate what Gedlingborough council's done.
Thanks, Peter, I could see Jenny and then I've heard Viv, so Jenny. Jenny.
Yeah. Just to say thank you to everybody who's produced this, it's a really comprehensive report. And it makes very positive reading in a very awful situation. I've been aware because of the updates and I thank Mike Hill and others who've kept us up to date while we've been at home on what's been happening with the services. I just wonder how we're actually going to thank all our staff. And and to really let them know how much we've appreciated it. I think we we almost need some huge banners saying thank you to Gedlingborough's staff all over the borough. But I think we need to make sure that they know we've recognised the work that they've put in because without them, these services just wouldn't have continued. And I think it it really bodes well for the future that people have come together in this way, both within the council and actually within communities, because the work that's happened in communities has been absolutely astonishing. Where you get neighbours who have not spoken to other neighbours, didn't even know them before this. And people have come together to support each other through WhatsApp groups and developing technologies in their local areas. It's been the bright thing in this awful situation.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, I mean, can I just say, like everybody else, that was a really comprehensive report. A massive thank you to Mike and the G B C team, and particularly also to the leader and the deputy leader for, although it's been very difficult in terms of communication and knowing what's going on, I felt really updated all the time. And I've been able to contact people and I've got a response. From my ward, I had nothing but praise in terms of the work. And the refuge collection has been exemplary. And I, you know, want to thank the county, you know, in in terms of the team for that, because that's been absolutely brilliant. But nothing but praise from my ward, you know, who have, you know, just been so grateful. The humanitarian centre, the work, I I contacted when I had people that needed some support, I got a response back straight away. There was people who wanted to volunteer, they got a response back, so really, really well done. I just had a cut, just one query too, I was just wondering about, you know, with all the media and things like that. In terms of, I know in the report about the P P E, how easy was it for us to acquire P P E? And have we got enough P P E going forward? And, you know, if, being just across, we don't have, but going forward, if we have a second wave? Because, you know, the national press, this has been one of the biggest issues, is about a lack of P P E because people haven't been able to access it. And I noticed in the report, you know, it it looks as if you were giving back some P P E to other parts of the county. So just, if you could just give us just an update on P P E in terms of obviously safeguarding our staff and in the future.
I think we'll get we'll get that information, David, if we can get that, not on this system, but, you know, out through an email.
Yes, I can respond to Council McCrossan, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So anyone else?
Leader?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm not going to echo everybody else's say, because the 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 report stands for itself, just how wonderful the the response has been. I know it's, I know it's not much, but I'd like to suggest we do an additional recommendation. So just noting the report. I'm sorry.
Go on.
I'm just thinking, note noting the report's not really going far enough, is it? So I'd like I'd like to put something on the lines of the cabinet expresses its thanks to the staff at all levels in the council for their tremendous efforts, flexibility and dedication to maintaining our services and helping Gedlin residents during the coronavirus pandemic. Something on those lines.
David, you're as a word, Smith, could you just add the thanks to the public? Because I think the public have, in most cases, collaborated with us.
Yeah, and thanks, thanks to 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 the Gedlin public and volunteers for their contribution.
Brilliant, thank you.
Yeah, can I can I follow that with a question to to Dave? I mean, the report very much reads as though it's over, it's finished. Well, that's it, are we are we are we unwinding things now or are things are things continuing?
So Ellen's going to talk to you about reset and sort of working, how how the council's adapting its working processes to move forward. David, from a response point of view, now we've scaled down the the regular meetings that, as you see in the report, were twice daily. Every, you know, every day of the week and calls at the weekend when it was really busy to three, three days a week, and we're now moving that down just to one conversation a week. But we've got a complete watching brief on, ready to respond again. So we're still linked in to the local resilience forum, tasking and coordination group. Mike as chief execs linked into the strategic group. We've got staff embedded in the plans around reactivation, breakout plans that's been led by the L R F and the the two public health directors around test and trace. So, you know, we're watching the R eight weekly. We have a a weekly update from the information logistics cell about infections, reinfections, hospital admissions, discharges and new infections. Now, it was completely cited on it, councillor Alison, the the last page of of the document, which Lance and I have 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 lived and breathed with Ellen and other colleagues on the line. If we need to press the go button for a full scale response, then we're ready to do that. But in between, it's a watching brief, keeping the comms going, keeping the messages about, you know, being alert, being safe, you know, Rob's still putting those messages out for us and and watching and watching with all antennas, ten eyes up in the air for potential new cases, you know, locally. But at the moment, you know, we've scaled the operation down, so the reset work can have prominence. But we are ready to go should we need to be.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, John, if I can.
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, I I just echo what Dave said, I think, in presenting the report. And just a couple of initial thoughts that's like me from what's clearly been an unprecedented challenge is that, you know, we've had, Leader, a a mission and a vision in the council to serve people, improve lives for the last 10 years. And at the council's darkest hour, we've shown that we actually do mean it. It's not words on a page, we've risen to the occasion. And I think I'm very clear, and I think you are, Leader, and and the cabinet is, as councillor Alison has just said, that that would not have been able to have been achieved without the Herculean efforts of our staff. You know, right from Mike as the chief exec down to the frontline, who actually have played a remarkable role. I think the council said, you know, the 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 simple task of just picking one element of the council, not the not the integration of any other element of maintaining the refugee services, as councillor McCrossan said, was was outstanding. You know, they were staff who not only had perhaps one of the most difficult jobs in terms of how labour intensive it is, and obviously how significant it is in terms of it had gone wrong, the potential for a second public health crisis, let alone the the virus, but also clearly were hugely at risk. You know, in the same way that some of our colleagues in the care sector and in the N H S sector were because of the proximity of them working with their colleagues, but also the proximity with the public and obviously the interaction physically in terms of of their role. So I think, you know, the council's shown that serving people improves, improving lives, it lives day by day. Some of the remarkable stuff, John, as David says, that's gone on in the background, you know, the the legal work, you know, and the navigating us through difficult paths by Helen and and Alec and, you know, the legal team in the background. You know, people like Alison, even in the face of personal challenges, you know, in her own family and adversity in her own family, working flat out to make sure that we responded to the government's requests around finances. I did just want to touch on that, John, because I think it would be remiss of us not to allude to the financial challenge. I did just want to touch on that, John, because I think it would be remiss of us not to, um, allude to the financial challenge. That this, this crisis has clearly blown us sideways in many different ways, but the 3.9 million pound financial deficit, um, which is the financial hit in the immediacy from coronavirus is clearly, um, unprecedented and huge and comes off the back of a decade, um, of sustained austerity where we were entering at that period as the council that was the worst hit in terms of, of spending power. We've obviously received, you know, through pressure and lobbying, uh, you know, and I know you've kept up the pressure, John, at the D C N and all the colleagues have, and I've tried to at the L G A and Alison and others through their, teams of finance officers across the country, we've received 1.2 million pounds, uh, extra from the government. Let's not be churlish about that. We welcomed it. We thanked it, uh, and it's appreciated. But let's also be clear that it leaves a 2.6 million pound financial gap and the sustained loss of income from life not being able to resume to normal in terms of the Bonnington Theatre, in terms of the leisure centres, um, is huge. And I think we need to be really clear, John, and we need to continue to press the government that if they don't sort this situation out, local government across the country is going to find itself in a situation where it's been clapping, uh, public sector heroes every week on a Thursday and then may end up having to issue P forty fives to those heroes uh, as we come into the recovery phase. And I think clearly that would be hugely unacceptable, um, on the part of the government. And we need to continue to hold their feet to the fire about it, John. I'm not making a partisan point. They're facts, you know, they're, they're unarguable facts. That is the reality of the situation that we, um, that we find ourselves in. I think also, John, it's worthwhile thanking our trade union colleagues and our councillor colleagues across party, you know, as well as the cabinet have continued to feed local, uh, advice and local information in from their own wards have directed people who have been in need to, to the humanitarian centre and clearly the trade unions, you know, representing colleagues who have, who, as David has said, have been under immense pressure, um, you know, as staff working long hours, you know, 24 hours a day in, in many cases and situations, taking our calls as we were asking questions and pushing things in, um, should be given credit. I think the leadership of the S L T team, uh, John, has been fantastic. You know, under my stewardship and, and Helen and, and Dave going way above beyond, uh, you know, their responsibilities and, and Alison and, and my Avery contributing into to that has been remarkable. You'd expect me to say this, John, but I think the communications effort, as David said, has been absolutely outstanding. And I think in particular, Rob, Rob MacLeary deserves huge credit. I've, I've been pestering him non-stop, John. I know you have and I know the colleagues have and, um, you know, he's, he's been, you know, working all sorts of hours, uh, on this and you know, Rob's got a, an infographic that I think has been circulated or is going to circulate that just shows you the amount of, amount of communication that's been put out as, as Viv said. Just finally, John, I think, you know, you, you touched on this and I think this is really important. We shouldn't lose sight of, um, the compassion shown by elected members and staff that placed us in a good position to support the most vulnerable in this crisis. You know, Henry and Jenny would, um, refer to this, but the council tax hardship fund that the government launched in Gedling hasn't been drawn on significantly. Why? Because Gedling has one of the most extensive council tax reduction schemes in the country. It's a scheme we know has taken criticism in quarters locally, but we've defended that scheme as a set of officers and members. And it's proven to be an extra safety net where otherwise people would have fallen through, uh, the cracks. So I think people deserve credit for some of the schemes that were already in place, uh, John, that I think provided that shield, um, you know, as, as, as we entered this phase. And then just finally, John, I think you hit the nail on the head. The, the biggest credit of all should go to the public for the support, for their forbearance, but also for stepping up to the plate and supporting the council at what otherwise would have been a really, really testing period. The 500 volunteers that we've mobilised, many of whom have been used. But also, John, they don't get the credit they deserve. The faith leaders and the community leaders whom without the humanitarian centre at Richard Herod would not have been able to run. You know, the expertise of people like John Farhi, Helen Lloyd, you know, our colleagues from, um, from Hart, you know, who have been pulled together uh, as faith leaders and, and community leaders, as I think has been absolutely outstanding, John. And I certainly hope, John, and we're going to talk about this, um, you know, in, in, in the next item, that the lessons as councillor Hollingsworth, I think, hit it, hit the nail on the head that have been learnt from this crisis, that there is such thing as society, there is such thing as community. Let's leave behind the individualistic view that we've had for far too long, um, in this country. And let's remember to be a bit kinder and more caring to people, John. You've always talked about since you became leader, John, as being a compassionate council, and I think we've shown it. Um, let's make sure that that continues and that we continue to look out for those who perhaps haven't got a voice or, or are most uh, vulnerable. But I think the work, you know, has been remarkable, John. I think you deserve huge credit, John. Um, you know, and I know you don't like to take plaudits, but the leadership's shown, I think, throughout this has been remarkable. And the final thing, John, is the L R F. You know, the Local Resilience Forum has been a team effort. And we should thank our police colleagues, the fire colleagues, you know, colleagues from the county council, our colleagues from the hospitals. I think it's a crying shame that certain people in elected office in the county, John, now want to have a debate about reorganising local government. We've just shown over the last few weeks in the L R F that actually we can work as a team, we can play as a team. And when we do play as a team at every level in local government and across the public sector agencies and the private sector agencies, we can do what we need to do to rise uh, to the challenge. And clearly we need to be, uh, fighting those silly games around rearranging the debt chairs on the Titanic, uh, John, which I think is light fiddling while Rome is burning by some people sadly are in elected office, uh, across the county.
Thanks, Michael. And just taking that out, it is frustrating from this morning's meeting with the D C N. Is that there's, there's obviously a clear drive now from number 10, and I apologise for the politics of it, but we have to, you've already started it there. It's the fact that devolution is high on that agenda. They are looking clearly for a super authorities, uh, with a focus on the mayors. And, and, uh, this is going to be a distraction while we're dealing with something that's very, very serious can re, obviously rear its head again. They're even looking now at, uh, as I'm told this morning, uh, of doing away with the police and crime commissioners. So along with all the councils, uh, and, and, and doing these super, super councils. They, um, there's another, actually, uh, our planning people will need to look at. Seventy-five percent of the councils now, which are districts, seventy-five percent of them do not have five years' supply of land. And that will have a massive impact on, uh, on future building, et cetera. The, uh, there's going to be an emergency budget. There's no date, but it is now said to be in July. And I think we need to concentrate as a cabinet and as a a leadership team, we now, now need to concentrate on how we're going to do the sums to set, uh, to set clear. We've got 2.6 million there that we're down. Uh, what, what are we going to do with that? The district shortfall, and this has come off that, uh, delta returns off the last one, the district shortfall is round about 53%. That's 53%. They're telling us what we should have and we're telling them what we should need. And, and hopefully tomorrow night, thanks to our finance team, they'll be given the latest figures, uh, to the delta returns tomorrow night. The whole lot is up there. It's, it's absolutely very difficult to deal while other people, particularly locally at county level, et cetera, uh, are trying to poke us in the nose while we're trying to look after the welfare and be a, you know, caring, community compassionate council. And that's what we've proven to be with our staff and, and, and the members. But if, is there anyone else? And I'll move to the recommendations. I'll move the recommendations. They're on page nine. Have a second there.
Yep.
So Leader, sorry, it's Helen. Can I just confirm that you're happy to add to the additional recommendations, um, that have been recommended by, by councillor Ellis? So the specific, uh, uh, thanks to staff and the public. Thank you.
Yes.
John, John, just, John, just, sorry, John, just before you move the recommendations, because I think it's a really, really important point for further debate by councillor Hollingsworth. Now, welcome David's suggestion around the recommendation. I do think we need to find it within ourselves, John, at some point to have a debate about. And I know we've already talked about some of the practical things we can do to celebrate the efforts of the public around potentially some sort of lasting memorial and tribute for the, for the public somewhere in the, uh, in the borough, including those tragically, John, who have lost family members and lives, which is horrific, taken far too soon in, in, in many cases, including some of our frontline workers. Um, but, but I do think, John, and I just want to talk about this because I've been pressing this issue nationally, that two things we need to find within ourselves to have a debate about what meaningfully we can do to recognise our staff right across the piece. And I'm talking about pay and recognition. Uh, you know, I'm not making a specific second recommendation at this stage, John, because I know there are, there are financial pressures. But I also think, John, it's incumbent on us as politicians to really press the government, uh, to sort local government payout once and for all and give people the reward they deserve for the hard work that they've done. And I include in, you know, and I said this at the L G A call last week, I include in that chief executives and S L T colleagues. I think it's about time government ministers stopped having a pot shot at colleagues like Mike uh, and Dave and Helen. Yes, they might be paid, uh, you know, a, a reasonable, um, salary and relatively higher than, than some of the people in local government. But I tell you what, they do a really good job. And I think it's a cheap shot for people to, uh, to take a pot shot at, at colleagues who are doing an important job right across local government in every role. Um, and, and I think it's very sad, John. Uh, you know, I spoke to you about it, depressed at the L G A, for the L G A to lobby the government to, to see an increase in, you know, pay and recognition for local government staff in the, as we come out of this crisis, that, um, certain political groups at the L G A didn't seem to agree with that for whatever reason, John, which I find tragic. Because we wouldn't have got through this without our staff. They've been the fourth emergency service. Uh, and as I say, that, that, that goes right from the frontline, right up through our service managers, right up to, uh, the chief exec. We saw it under Eric Pickles having pot shots at senior managers. And I think we need to stop it. It's not out for a one team and we wouldn't have gone to got through this without being one team.
Well done, Mike. Totally agree. So now moving a recommendation. It has been seconded. All be agreed.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're going to move, move on to item four on page 75. Uh, and that's the reset strategy. And this is you, Helen, I believe.
Mike, did you want to, to say a few words before I come in?
I've lost them, Mike.
Mike? Sorry, I was on mute. Sorry, yes. I'm still failing like the rest of us. So, thank you, Leader. Um, I think we just talked about it, but we are still under the threat of a second wave of coronavirus. So we need to be careful in all that we do. But as David's just explained, we do have that, uh, covered with a, you know, emergency pandemic plan version two that we can adopt, uh, and work through if necessary. I think now it's important, and we have done, that a council does now move into the second phase, which is a recovery. And not just recovery as back to normal, but recovery and a reset phase to create a new normal, a new, better and improved, um, way of operating as the council. And that's something we aim to do as part of this report. And we've got to recognise that this won't take weeks. It'll take several months, if not over a year, um, before our services do return to some form of normality. But, but we aim to get there and what we bring back will be some people calling it build back better. So that's something we, we're starting to adopt in our principles moving forward. So as you know, um, car parks are now open, waste collections are back to full capacity. So we are well underway now with a first step, which is to reinstate services that were previously suspended as part of the council's response to the virus. So I'm pleased to say now most services are now back to normal with the exception of the civic centre really being opening to the public. And of course, we're still waiting for the play areas to be open once the government says it's safe to do so. So, uh, Helen will go through this report in a minute, but the report really sets out how we aim to continue with this recovery and the reset work. And again, with the primary aim of supporting our businesses, our residents, our communities, and of course, the council operations itself. We have, um, finances and major issue, frontline services. And of course, the new ways of working as, as a council through the support services as well. So as previously, um, we need to continue to work closely and we are doing with the Local Resilience Forum. Again, we, we need to keep responding to government guidance and instructions that come out. We're waiting for quite a lot of new instructions and guides now in relation to leisure, uh, cemeteries. Uh, the guidance is very weak on things like public conveniences and the, the frequency of cleaning. So we've done what we can, but we're still trying to work through those. There's a lot of stuff we're waiting for to move on now and, and get through. But, um, the report outlines our plans uh, for delivering the way forward. We, we split it into five work streams within the report. And if I stop there now, Leader, and ask Helen to take us through the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leader. So I'm, I'm very, very pleased to be able to present this report to you on behalf of a senior leadership team. Um, this has very much been a team effort in developing the strategy, um, identifying the appropriate work streams, identifying the strategic objectives. Um, Dave Wakelin's obviously outlined the outstanding work carried out by staff in responding to the, the pandemic. And um, just to put my thanks on the table to, to staff, I've worked very, very closely with, with Dave, um, very, very closely with a number of the, uh, officers that have been specifically mentioned. And a number of my services have also been, been referenced. Uh, my view is that those staff have, have done a phenomenal job in the council's response um, to the pandemic. And I think they're very much up, uh, to the challenge in order to move into our, our reset phase. So Dave's report looked back. This report obviously looks forward and sets out how we propose to approach, um, the reset phrase. So I'll assume all members of cabinet have, have read the report, but if I just may highlight a couple of points for you. Um, so as, as Mike has just explained, you'll appreciate that whilst there are still some services and some facilities which are still suspended or closed, recovery activity has already begun and a significant number of services already reinstated. And they're at appendix one to the report. Uh, you might notice that the decision to reopen that the market is missing. That's obviously been, been made and the market is now operational. So what I will say is in the same way that, that Dave Wakelin has described how we have actively and very quickly responded to government guidance when we've had to, um, uh, reduce service, close facilities down, we've applied the same principles in our approach to, to reset. And as the government guidance has allowed, or particularly in the case of our waste, uh, services, capacity issues resolved, appropriate risk assessments were carried out. And again, quick decisions were made using the established, um, decision-making process to bring those services back for our residents and our communities as soon as possible. And obviously this will continue throughout the reset phase. So just returning to the reset strategy itself, uh, you'll see from the report and, and the comment that Mike's just made that the approach proposed is not simply about returning to normal. It's about taking the opportunity to create something better. And I think it's worth pointing out that the fact it's called a reset strategy rather than a recovery strategy is really important because it signifies that we are looking to do something different. So, uh, we've, we've referenced, um, the, the involvement we've had with the L R F. There are established, uh, policies and protocols, um, through the L R F structure. And ordinarily, when you're looking at, for, for example, dealing with, uh, a flood, the terminology used is about recovery. Um, obviously, uh, that concept runs through our reset strategy, but what we are saying is that it isn't just the, the, the case that we need, need to just return to normal. This is about, as Mike describes, building back something better. So I'll come to the negative impacts on, of the virus in a minute. But first I just want to emphasise the positives, um, which are detailed in paragraph 2.2 of the report. So just very briefly, during the pandemic, we've seen staff embrace different ways of working. And again, Dave has, has described how we've achieved that. Um, and, and the fact that there are a number of members of staff who have been diligently doing their day job, sitting at their breakfast bar, at their, um, dining room table, and also reference the additional hours. What we've also seen is where, um, members of staff have had to juggle childcare with their work. Um, they've offered to work different hours. So it's not unusual for members of staff to perhaps be starting very early in the morning at six o'clock before the children get up, to get a few hours in before they start picking up their work. Um, and then sharing that responsibility with partners and then maybe coming back to their laptop at, I don't know, nine, 10 o'clock at night to do those extra hours. So we've seen some real flexibility in the way that staff have, have worked. We've also spoken about increased volunteering and sense of community spirit. I think councillor Hollingsworth specifically referenced that. I think it's really, really important that we understand and recognise that, um, that's a real positive coming out of, of Covid. And obviously there are environmental benefits that we're aware of, such as reduction in carbon emissions. Uh, the fact that, um, you know, from a, a, a local authority perspective, our staff are not driving into, to work, uh, they're using their vehicles less. So as part of the reset strategy, we really want to challenge ourselves to retain and enhance these positives rather than simply returning to how things were before. So if I can just give you a little practical example, so Dave's mentioned customer services and you've seen in the previous report, the increase in calls. Um, I think Rosie mentioned that over the, the, uh, an eight week period, I think we received, uh, thousands more calls than we would normally do. Um, and automatically you would think that our performance would have dipped because of the increase in demand on that service. But actually what we've seen is that there's been an increase in performance and the team has really, really worked hard, as Dave has, uh, uh, as described, to make sure that if a member of the public is ringing into the building, the fact that that officer is not physically sat in the civic centre does not matter at all. They are receiving, um, the same excellent service that they would receive, they would have received six months ago. Um, the also, uh, important point that I'd, I'd just make here is that although the building has been, um, closed to, uh, members of the public dropping in, we have always, uh, offered emergency appointments. So if there are vulnerable in our community, um, throughout the Covid pandemic that actually require a face-to-face appointment with a member of staff, we have offered that. I'm really, really pleased to say that, um, we have been able to deal to say that we have been able to deal with all issues raised by our residents over the telephone. And actually, there's been no need for individuals to come into the building. We've also seen increase in digital forms. So for me, it's really, really important as a director responsible for that service area, that we continue to drive this digital and cultural change and these different ways of working. And I'd also like to support the comments made by councillor Payne about recognising partnership working at LRF level. I think some barriers have been broken down, because we've had to work really, very closely together. And we've worked really, really well across all those organisations, and also the work of the faith leaders and the food banks. Again, we've historically had good relationships, lots of good work through our community relations department. But actually, we've involved them significantly in humanitarian effort, and I think we mustn't lose sight of this as we move forward. So those are the positives. But we know that unfortunately, Covid-19 has had a devastating effect on residents, communities and businesses in the borough. And again, councillor Payne referenced, unfortunately, I think it's just over a hundred members of our community have lost their lives to Covid. And councillor Ellis asked about whether this is over, and I think it's fair to say that our response will continue for some time yet. And whilst we've wound the response down, and we would be ready, as David describes, to press the button if there is a second wave, I think we do need to recognise that there is ongoing work behind the scenes. So we were just discussing at the IMT Reset this morning, shielded individuals, for example. You know, at the moment, we don't know when the restrictions in relation to shielded individuals will actually be removed. There are national reports about loneliness and isolation. We need to ensure that we continue to support those individuals moving forward. And also, the impact of test and trace. And again, we've recognised that, that if, for example, a member of staff has come into contact with somebody who has tested positive, that member of staff will need to go and self-isolate potentially for 14 days, depending on the circumstances. But I think we also need to understand the impact on our communities as well. So there may be additional demands and needs in the humanitarian effort, because those individuals who are now having to isolate as a result of test and tracing might need our support. So I think it's fair to say we need to recognise as part of our reset, that that support will need to continue. So our strategy, I feel, seeks to recognise we need to provide continued support through these difficult times. We also need to support our businesses, our communities and our residents to recover. And I think we also need to recognise that our previous established approaches to working with our businesses and our communities might not be appropriate moving forward, and we might need to look at different ways of working. There's obviously much information in the press about Black Lives Matters, the impact on the Bain community, particularly in relation to Covid. So it would be remiss of me not to make specific reference to inequality as we move forward through the reset phase. It's clear from the Public Health England report that was published this week, that in a number of respects, Covid-19 has had a disproportionately negative impact on the Bain community. And it's also really clear that existing inequality that was already present for those communities has been exacerbated by the virus. However, I think it's really important for us also to be aware that there is emerging data suggesting that other protected groups have also been more affected. So when I was writing this particular report, and again, Dave alluded to the equalities implications section in the previous report, I was actually really, really surprised that there has been an impact on pretty much every single protected group. And I really struggle to find a protected group that wasn't impacted in a negative way by Covid. So these are set out in paragraph 1.6. And I think for me, what's really, really important, it's, we need to understand the national picture. But what's really important for us as we, as our reset plans evolve, is that we understand the impact on our residents, on our communities, on our business, as we look forward not only to rebuilding communities, restarting our services and helping the local economy bounce back, but also creating resilient communities and resilient businesses which are capable of thriving despite those future challenges. So for me, it's much, much more than just saying, right, you've now recovered, we can now walk away. There's much more that we need to do. And tackling inequality must absolutely be embedded in our plans moving forward. So that's why our strategy is underpinned by assessments of the impact of Covid-19. That's referenced in the strategy, because we really need to understand the issues for our residents, our businesses to inform a meaningful action plan. So another key piece of work which will underpin the reset strategy is the review of the Gedling Plan, which is covered in the covering report. Whilst it was only approved three months ago, Covid-19 has had such a significant impact, I think it is the right thing for us to pause and reassess whether in particular, the actions planned for this year are deliverable and are still our priority, our corporate priority moving forward. I think we also need to recognise that there will be significant new work streams coming out of the reset strategy, which probably ought to be reflected in the Gedling Plan. So work on this has already commenced, and we expect to bring a report into the August meeting of Cabinet, obviously for Cabinet's views on that. So in terms of the delivery of the reset strategy, I won't go through all the work streams, but you'll see that we have a number of work streams to be delivered through, sorry, led by each member of senior leadership team, which will be overseen by Mike as acting chief executive. At this stage, the report sets out what I would call the indicative activity. So we've identified activity under each head that we feel would deliver the strategic objectives. But I think, as you'll appreciate, we need to do some more work to really understand the impact of Covid in some areas. So this work will evolve as this is understood. The projects we are unable, we are able to progress will also be dependent on the funding available. So Leader has already mentioned the significant impact on the council's finances. So a key piece of work as part of the reset strategy, you'll see that there is a work stream of finances, which is being led by Alison Ball. And Alison will be looking at the assessment of the council's finances, and that underpins and will absolutely feed into the work led by other senior leadership team colleagues. So the final point I'd like to highlight is that the strategy also recognises that we need to resist the temptation for all staff to simply return to their day job. There's obviously a question about whether that normality is the normality, is that better moving forward? But also, I think we also need to understand that ensuring successful delivery of the reset strategy needs to be properly resourced. And if we allow staff to just drift back to the day job, I think we will be in a situation where there will be risk of non-delivery. And I think we also need to understand that in some areas, there will be a huge challenge as those services continue to support the recovery effort, lead on certain elements of the reset strategy and deliver business as usual. And again, Lance is in the call, and we've heard the central role that Lance and his team, community relations, has played in the response. You know, for me, they have an absolutely central role moving forward in terms of a reset, but they also need to continue to be able to resource and support that humanitarian endeavour. So perhaps, Leader, if I leave it there for now, the recommendations are on page seventy-five of the agenda. Obviously, I'm happy to take any questions, but if you have any questions in relation to the individual work streams, I'm sure my SLT colleagues will be happy to respond.
Thanks, Helen, for another excellent presentation there. Do we have any questions for Helen?
I've got one, John.
We're on here. Viv can hear you. That's it.
All right. Yeah. Thanks, Helen, for that. Gave lots of information. And I absolutely agree with the position that we're taking, that life isn't going to be the same. And so we do need to learn from the experiences. I liked the bit in the report, particularly around open spaces, and really moving away, not necessarily always in the leisure centre, but thinking about how we can actually utilise our open spaces more for our residents in terms of health and wellbeing. I just wanted to check, and I mean, I might have missed it, because I note that the car parks are now open, and obviously, we're encouraging people around health and wellbeing to get out and about. Have we opened our public toilets? Because this has been a real issue for older people, for children. It's really, you know, I was in Derbyshire the other day, and I was just incensed by the fact that all the public toilets in Derbyshire were shut. And what we are encouraged to do is to get out and to partake in fresh air and get ourselves moving. I just wanted to know whether we'd opened our toilets, particularly like the ones in the Gedling Country Park or the other parks that we've got.
Thanks, Helen.
The other thing, John, sorry, the other thing was, just in terms of, I don't know whether it comes in here, but I was really delighted that the borough, as a borough, we are going to take the position around Black Lives Matters and ensure that we haven't got any links to the slave trade in terms of any of our old street names, which is brilliant. I just wondered whether that should be included in this piece of work that Helen has done, or whether it would be seen as something separate.
It's probably covered by the equalities. But Helen?
Thank you, Leader. So if I can just respond in relation to the public toilets, so pleased to report that a decision was made on the 14th of May. So very, very quickly, the council-operated public conveniences in Bestwood Country Park, Arnheld Park and Gedling Country Park could reopen with effect from the 16th of May.
Excellent.
So they've been open now for over a month. And Mike's obviously alluded to the fact that there are challenges around gaps in government guidance to assist us in relation to appropriate cleaning schedules, et cetera. So reopening them has been risk assessed. We have applied what we can consider to be appropriate control measures to keep members of the public safe. They're obviously kept under review. And if more government guidance comes out that requires us to do any additional work, we will absolutely do so. But now, pleased to report that that was already done. In relation to the second question, I think that that piece of work is probably a separate piece of work that Mike Hill is leading on around the association of street names with potential slave traders. So that, for me, I think that sits outside of the reset strategy. I suppose my presentation is more about the inequalities that already exist in our communities that have clearly been exacerbated by Covid-19, and really getting a strong understanding of what those are as we put together our plans, which again, Lance will have a key role in doing, to assist our communities moving forward and making sure that actually, we're not exacerbating those inequalities, we are improving the position for those individuals in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Helen. Mike?
John, I've had my hand up.
Sorry. I've already got four pictures on here, so.
Let Michael go first.
Was that me, John?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, about the street names. But yes, there's a separate piece of work we've engaged, Mike Avery, in his planning team and building control teams to look at through your direction, John. So we're not aware of any statues or monuments that would be affected under this, you know, slave trade sort of associations. But we are also looking at certainly all the street names as well. It's a bigger piece of work than you expect, because we're looking to Rob McCleary to help us to identify who these slave trade names are. So we can do the work from our side in terms of the ones clearly recognisable as people connected with that history. But then Rob's also doing a bit of research to help us in that regard as well. So it's not a quick win. We're not aware of any yet. But clearly, we're taking it seriously, and we're looking to progress that. If we do find any, then clearly it will be a decision that we will discuss with the leadership and Cabinet.
Thanks, Mike. Just quick, come in. It's quite interesting, actually. I'm reading that Lloyds today and Green King have apologised for their involvement. And it was also interesting, further reading on the internet, it's the fact that in eighteen something, whenever the slavery act was finished, there was a vast fund amassed, a vast fund for compensation. That fund did not go to anybody that was in slavery. It went to the owners of wherever they came from. So it was very, you know, the employers and then the people that transported people, they got that fund. It seemed terrible. And just, I know some people have been sniping at me for raising this, but you do need, you do need to get this correct and try it. You're not correct history, but at least we can do our little bit towards it. Who was next?
John.
Jenny, sorry. Just a minute. Jenny. Jenny's got her hand up. Jenny?
Thank you. Yes, several times. Thank you. Just a few comments. On page eighty, it's my eighty, so I don't know what everybody else has got. In terms of the vibrant town and local centre, there was a nice little bit on Radio Nottingham, talking about the measures that were being taken for opening up our town centre, which I thought was really positive. I heard that. I just want to thank Jo and the Econ Development Team for the continuing work they've kept done during this time on Arnold Market and the development of Burton Road and Station Road. And also Joanne and Alison, because the work is still carrying on on the review. The government's very keen that progresses. And I had a meeting with her, talking about the grant. I know an email's gone out today for the cross-party working group. In terms of housing, there were two significant planning approvals this week, which was good news for Teal and Keetmoat extension up there. The only downside, I was looking this morning at a prediction of a 7.5% fall in house prices by Saville, and we really don't look back on future development. On the housing delivery test, I know that they're not implementing that at the moment, but it would be nice if the LGA, I'm sure they're doing this, and everybody else, tries to get the government to actually scrap that at this time. It seems to be a bit irrelevant in the times that we've got. I'd like to see more cycle routes with, as we're working with counties, get more cycle routes in. There's been a huge increase in cycle. And I think we ought to be cashing in on that and looking at possibly using the park and ride site to look at a park and cycle, as well as a park and, the public transport routes. I'm just really quite worried about the possibility of a tsunami of evictions when this is over, because people have had rent holidays and mortgage holidays, and possibly a huge increase in unemployment. We know there's a lot of people claiming benefits now. And also, a very worrying report that private rents have hit record highs, and are expected to increase by about 5.5% next year. So that's a bit of worry that we should be looking out for. Very quickly, you can see on page eight-two, under the reduced level of loneliness and isolation, that staff have been included in looking at mental health needs in future plans. I think that's really important. Just my comments, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I'll leave it, John.
Peter?
Yeah.
I would just support what Helen was saying, that we, I mentioned this before to Helen, and then we're looking at it. I'm concerned about public toilets. We've been, it's always been an issue with Gedling public toilets, and I think we've got to try and solve it properly. It's a very difficult one, and I think it's something we have to look at seriously. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Jonathan, I can.
Michael?
Just to back up Jenny's point, I know that the references made in Gedling Plan, which obviously, you know, runs in complement to this, and the reset strategy running in complement to the Gedling Plan, but the, I think we need to play a lead role as a borough council in pressing the county council to improve sustainable transport. I'm really concerned that enough isn't being done, John, radically around safe walking space, safe cycling space. You know, if you look at some of what the London Boroughs are doing and other councils around the country, they're leading the way on this. And I think if we were responsible for the highways, John, you know, we'd be there by now. And, you know, I've had a number of messages, John, I know you have on social media, I know others have as well, you know, and Viv's talked about this before, really frustrating, you know, we live in a beautiful part of the world. What, you know, what's wrong with having a few more cycle lanes and a few more wide pedestrian ways, you know, for the time being? And I just linked to, John, you know, clearly, this absolutely horrific virus has given the planet a breathing space. You know, we've seen some of the wildlife returning to areas like Venice and places like that, John, and indeed in our own countries as well. And, you know, you and I were talking the other day, John, about the sharp fall, you know, for Peter and Sandra in pollution at Daybrook Square, you know, on the A60 because of the car reduction. So I think a concerted effort to press, you know, corporately the county council to up its game on this is important. And just allied to that, John, reasserting our commitment as a borough council to look after those who we share the planet with, i.e. our wildlife, our flora and our fauna as well. And I think doing more work in the reset strategy, Helen, around pollinator zones and pollinator corridors, and really stepping that up. Certainly, I've already made one suggestion to Mike, and I'm going to work with Certainly, I've, I've already made one suggestion to Mike and I'm going to work with, with Jane Richardson and others around the Stockings Farmer State, John, in my own ward, in County Division, about trying to come to agreement with residents about, about some agreed pollinator zones on the landscaping, you know, so other areas can be cut, but there are some areas that are agreed with residents, with input from residents, where, where they don't need to be cut and where we try and protect the bees and the birds and the insects and, and other animals that, you know, that enjoy that space. Because, you know, we're, we're not the only people on this planet and we need to make sure that we're looking out for those who, you know, haven't got a voice but share this planet with us and actually we're, we're here before us, you know, on this planet as well. So I think that's a crucial part of, you know, the, the, the reset and recovery. And the other thing, John, is less tangible, but, you know, we talked about this a few weeks ago, how do we guard against a return to business as usual in relation to the way that local government staff are denigrated and denuded? You know, we, we rightly revere, revere our NHS staff. How do we play our role in making sure that local government staff are seen as the fourth emergency service and that they are recognised, you know, properly in their pay and reward and that, that local government is seen for the important work. I think it would be a real mistake to return to the society we had before where, you know, local government's just seen as a delivery arm of the central state, we're not. And actually, you know, this virus would not have been tackled if it weren't for ordinary people doing extraordinary things at a local level, the, the central response from, from government, and I'm not making a partisan point here, you know, and it's been local, local communities, local councils, local businesses that have done a, you know, a really good job on this. So that's a less tangible thing, but how do we think about upping the stock of local government workers and making sure that they're realised for the heroes that they are as well as our NHS staff and other people?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's interesting there, Michael, it might be that you've probably got subjects for the next three or four contacts, because I know that the nation's gone back, those that are fortunate enough to have a garden. And, and it's about planting the things that will help and enhance the, you know, the, the climate. So if you've got the things in there, the bees, everything else, then we should be educating people because they won't go and find it, a lot of people won't. But, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot, a lot more to be done. And I think the role, not only of the, the workers of our district councils, but also for the, for the people who are administering it, that's very underestimated, there's no doubt in that. So we're now, where are we? I've got it in front of me, shop local, I think that might be something that we put out, you know, out to people, to remind people to shop local, because if they don't, then they'll, they'll be gone, there's no doubt in that. The interest in on some authorities, I don't know whether people have picked this up, on some authorities that haven't got their own leisure services, that the providers are now making legal moves to, to get the money they're losters. So these companies have gone in there and said, we will promise you the earth, have not promised the earth, because they want paying for it. And it's going to put some councils locally in difficulties because they've, they've outsourced their things. So anyway, is anybody else, because we're on page 75, recommendations, there's four there, I'll move those. Second, if.
Yeah, second.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed. Thank you. Thanks a lot. The, and then we've just got the, the local plan. Sorry, not local plan, forward plan, I've got local plan embedded in my head. It's just a note, it's a comment on that.
Looking raised there. Any, any other business, just to, any other business, just to say.
John.
Yeah.
John.
Just calling me.
Henry.
Henry.
Yeah.
I'd say him on there.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to raise the issue. Can you all see me, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to raise the issue of the Health and Wellbeing Board. The Health and Wellbeing Board's not met for, throughout this whole period, they've not met at all. I've received various correspondence from people exceptionally concerned about the appointment of Steve Vickers to the Chair of that board. I spoke to Kit Sandman today because some districts are reviewing their position with regards to the Health and Wellbeing Board. And I do know that Ashfield have withdrawn their representative. The position I've taken is one where I've written back or I've, I've corresponded back with people that have roamed to me and said that my position is that we need to be on the Health and Wellbeing Board because it's important that we're there to challenge Mr Vickers, challenge his position, challenge what he's said in the past, but also, it's also important that we're there because we need people there that are going to stand up for people in the local community, particularly tackling all those issues around health inequalities and so forth and so forth. But his, his appointment is particularly worrying because some of the comments he made were absolutely appalling. The Islamic comment, Islamophobic comments he made.
But somebody give it what's then.
I, I've made it clear that the next board meeting, I will be raising that meeting. And in my correspondence to quite a few colleagues from within the Islamic community, I've, I've raised that issue and said, look, you know, I've taken on all those comments and I'll be raising those comments at the next board meeting and making sure that his position is challenging, he needs challenging, we need to, we need to be there to challenge it. If nobody's there to challenge it, then it makes it difficult, incredibly difficult. But I've taken, I spoke to John this morning about this as well, that I, I think it's important that we remain on the board because if we're not on the board, basically, we're just giving Kay Cuts what she wants, which is she wants the districts not to be involved with, you know, trying to drown us out basically. So I just think it's one to be aware of because the Health and Wellbeing Board obviously is an intriguing, it's, it's a very important body. And we need people there to be scrutinising what's happening. We need people there to be asking questions about what's happened during the pandemic as well, to the issues around PPE and so forth. And I think by not being there, we're just basically giving the Tories what they want, Kay Cuts what she wants. So, so I think, I mean, I don't know what your position is, but my position is I respect to be there than not to be there, but also at the same time challenge his appointment and challenge what he said in terms of Islamic comments. I mean, I was of the view, I was thinking of going in with a, a placard saying something along the lines of the consequence of ignorance is racial intolerance. But I, I just think it's important that we remain on that board, despite the fact that other districts are now reviewing the situation and I know Ashfield's withdrawn. So I just, I just don't know what your position is, I just wanted some comments on that piece. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Henry. Our, our position, and Mike and I have discussed it at length, that we do need somebody at that table, like we need, it's all right withdrawing, but if you're not there, you're part of the debate. But it's, it's not just about that and the awful things that were allegedly said, or not said, or put on social media. It is the fact that they've not held a meeting, this Health Board and Wellbeing, in a, in a world crisis, you know, epidemic turned to pandemic, they have not held a meeting since February, and I think that's an absolute disgrace whoever was chairing that. My call.
Yeah, just, I, I fully support that position Leader and, and that which Henry's suggested. Look, I think we should be really clear about this, as Henry has been, we need to be around the table, we need to be in the room, the Health and Wellbeing Board is a critical governance, a piece, a piece of governance around a statutory duty where we have a responsibility to stand up for those who are the most vulnerable in society. And I think it's for that reason we need to be in the room, but for that reason, as Henry says, that we need to have absolutely no truck with a racist or an Islamophobe being in the chair. And I think you're right, Henry, I think our representation around that, around that table, along with other representatives around that table from the health community, need to express very clearly our complete lack of confidence in somebody who has despicable views and has expressed despicable views and has still not yet publicly apologised himself for them, that it's not tenable for him to continue in that role as Chair steward in, you know, as through a difficult conversation. And I think, you know, if there's anything that's a stark reminder to us of the importance of having somebody in the chair of a statutory important body like that, it, it's the Public Health England report that we saw in recent weeks that very clearly states that there are disproportionate impacts, as Dave Wakeland expressed to us at the start of this meeting, on our colleagues from ethnic minority communities as a result of coronavirus. So I think you're absolutely right, Henry, this is about a lack of confidence, it's about having no truck with, with racism and Islamophobia, and it's about expressing those views in the strongest possible terms. But it is about staying around the table and making sure that we're speaking up for the most vulnerable people in, in, in that forum. Because to walk away from the table, that would be doing a disservice to those people who need us around here as John said, to, to, to make, to make the case. And, and I think that, that, that view needs to be made collectively. I think you're right, Henry, I think it needs to be made visibly and collectively. And ultimately, councillor Vickers will have to search his own conscience and come to his own view about whether he feels he's got the confidence of not just local authority partners, but partners from the health service, including some who may well be from ethnic minority backgrounds, who are sat in that room as he tries to steer us through those difficult conversations. And I think you've hit the nail on the head, John. There's a serious question to ask, why the hell hasn't this group been meeting through what's been a, a global and national health crisis? It's meant to be the body that's coordinating efforts around health and wellbeing. Why hasn't it met? I think, I think it's a question to ask, Henry.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments?
Leader, so it's Helen, Leader, can I, can I perhaps come in with an officer view, view on that? Obviously, I've heard what councillor Wheeler has to say. It is really, really important, certainly Lance and I would, would say, being part of the Health and Wellbeing Board is a key link in our health and wellbeing work. So I think I would absolutely echo from an officer perspective, the comments that have been made. The board is also the accountable body locally for a considerable amount of commissioned health and wellbeing services, so providers we work with. So I think it's, it is incredibly important that we're around the table and I would absolutely support the comments that councillor Wheeler's made. Happy councillor Wheeler, if you want to have a conversation with Lance and I separately to talk about how we might be able to assist in terms of calling that, that meeting. So if you haven't been having meetings and you need some support, more than happy to have that conversation separately if it helps.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you.
That's brilliant. Thank you. And I think we're nearly there. The, I was just going to say to people who see a lot of work going off at the Civic Centre of Bonnington, Herod, et cetera, that is, there's not all our own people are doing that, obviously they've got the professionals in. The 30-year-old plus toilet, some of you'll say, well, why have you changed them at this time? It's an ideal opportunity, the Civic Centre is being upgraded, was in the budget two years ago, that's being carried out. The Bonnington has been, the cinema side of it and the theatre, all the electrics, all the work that would have been done in the summer is, is now been done and it's ready to go, hopefully on the 4th of July to get the nod. And the Herod Centre, if you want to see, if you want to get a team down there, when they're not dealing with the humanitarian, they've got varnish brushing and painting and murals on the wall and things like that. So there's, there's a lot of work going off and it's, it's another indication of what sort of staff we've got. They could have easily sat back and, and basically strung it, but they haven't, they've got out there and they've, they've got on with it. Anyway, for no further questions, no further business, I'll close the meeting. Thank you.
Now, Alex, I can see John is crossing his next door.
Brush your button.